Quiet all of a sudden. I think we're gonna have a meeting here. Course we gotta wait for the mayor of Pro Tem. Yeah. All right, welcome. Okay. All right, we're gonna call this meeting of the city council, the city of Crescent City, to order. Uh, we're gonna have a report out for what happened in the closed session. Do you have a report?
No action to report this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do roll call.
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Pro Tem in score?
Here.
Mayor Gastineau.
I am here, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda tonight, we have a couple of acknowledgements. The first one is a suicide prevention proclamation. Gordon Clay should receive that, and Councilmember Murray is going to read that right now.
Thank you. The city of Crescent City proclamation of suicide prevention. Whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of all deaths in the United States, and is the second leading cause of death for ages twenty, ten to twenty-four, and whereas suicide is the eleventh leading cause of death in California, and the third leading cause of death for ages ten to twenty-four, and whereas over twice as many people die by suicide in California annually as by homicide, and whereas there are over a million suicide attempts in the United States annually, translating to one attempt every thirty-one seconds, and whereas there are approximately four point six million survivors of attempted suicide in the United States, and whereas suicide and suicidal behaviors occur among all age groups and across all socio-economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide work against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk from seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes survivors of non-fatal attempts, and whereas the suicide rate for Delmar County is almost two and a half times the California rate, and whereas eight out of ten people considering suicide give some indication of their intentions, and whereas most people who commit suicide do not want to die, they want to stop the pain and hurting, and whereas suicide is preventable and prevention starts with recognizing the warning signs and taking them seriously, and whereas the Delmar County Health and Human Services Agency is committed to raising awareness, providing education and training on suicide prevention and reducing stigma. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Crescent City hereby proclaims September 2016 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and calls upon families, government, agencies, businesses, schools, and healthcare institutions to support increasing awareness and reducing stigma. Proclaim this day August fifteenth, 2016. Ron Gastineau, mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clay, you gonna come up and receive this proclamation from us? Thank you. And we do have another one.
May I speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. I like your covers. Very professional. Gordon Clay, thecitizenwho care dot org, Brookings, Oregon. Mr. Chair, Council, and guests. Every two hours, a teenager in America takes their own life. And every September has been termed "back-to-school blues" because increases, because of the increase in suicides from this quiet summer. The kids are getting back to being bullied and all of that kinda stuff. I have two questions. Raise your hand if you can tell me the number of any suicide crisis phone line. Anybody? Raise your hand if you can tell me the number for a suicide crisis text number. And our kids need to know it. Our September program is designed to get a six-digit crisis text number embedded in every student's mind. Research shows that ninety-five percent of youth in crisis won't talk on a crisis phone line. They use cell phones but not for actual conversation. They do it for texting. Enter the number four seven one four seven one. Young people may not be able to articulate their feelings in a phone conversation, yet their emotions become crystal clear in a text conversation. People texting the organization are connected to a volunteer trained to use text messaging and familiar with the grammatical quirks, abbreviations, and emoticons used in text messaging. Say that they're in a public place or on a school bus, you can't use a phone or talk, but they can text, and without being overheard. A national hotline has been around, has been around for around twenty years and just passed four million calls. This number, four seven one four seven ones, have been around for just over, actually, three years. On August thirteenth, they have had over twenty million texters calling in for crisis. And one of the neat things about this is a phone call, the therapist that's on the other end only has the knowledge in their head of how to help the kid. On, on, on the texting, the twenty million texts that are already there, what the person texts in, the twenty million, it's analogged against those twenty million, and immediately comes back and says, when somebody says it this way, they're in crisis, major crisis. If somebody says it this way, eighty-four percent of them are cutters. And it goes through all of that, and it immediately clicks up the most important question to ask. A therapist can't do that. And it gets to the calls immediately and gets to the level of crisis that somebody is having. Next, in order to reduce or eliminate the stigma of mental health issues and suicide, we're asking the community volunteers, community volunteers who have ever considered seriously to attempt suicide or actually attempted it sometime in their life, to come out publicly and talk about it and say, "I'm still here." So that at-risk people will feel safer to talk about what's going on for them and get the necessary help they need before they put a period at the end of their life. Be courageous and come out as a survivor and let the youth and veterans see an example of how they can live. Next, have a personal conversation with somebody every day. Stop starting your regular conversations with a false greeting, "How are you?", unless you really mean it and wanna know. And be ready for somebody to say, "I'm not doing too well," and be sitting with them and, and deal with it. However, if you see a friend who doesn't seem to be acting like themselves, it's safe to ask, "Are you okay?" And know that the answer may not be "okay." And you're, you may at that point in time have saved a life, but at least they know somebody cares. Next, we want everybody to carry a semicolon card, and we, oh, I'll fill it. Call it, carry a semicolon card which has the information on it about both the hotline and the text line. And we're asking businesses to, that deal with the public, to put this window sign up that announces September as Suicide Prevention Month. It also has these cards with it in it, and we've got buttons. All of this is free. And we've got about eight locations right now. I just talked to Redwood Voice today and adding them in. As you can see, we are passionate in our belief that suicides are preventable and that prevention is a shared responsibility where every person has the potential to make a difference and save a life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do have another proclamation here about anti-bullying, and Mr. Holly is going to read that.
Thank you, and obviously this is a proclamation that is related to the proclamation about suicide. And this proclamation has to do with bullying. Whereas, school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and California, and whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation or harm intentionally directed at a person or a group of people, and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through technology such as the internet and cellphone. And whereas almost thirty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. And whereas, research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence, annually affecting millions of American children and adolescents, and thousands of California children and adolescents either as a bully or as a victim. And whereas, an estimated one hundred sixty thousand students in kindergarten through twelfth grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied. And whereas, targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. Students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities such as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas, children who bully are at a greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Crescent City hereby proclaims the month of October 2016 as Bullying Prevention Month, and be it further resolved that all citizens are encouraged to engage in activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents, and show support for youth who have experienced bullying. Proclaim this fifteenth day of August 2016, Mayor Ron Gastineau. So, thank you. And Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Clay, come on back up. And, uh, very short. The, I was at the teen health fair, uh, the end, or the early part of June, and we reached over two hundred kids. They had to listen to my spiel on suicide, and I'm told that there are buttons on backpacks all over Delmar County. I got down here because of Jacob Patterson with Coastal, Coastal, the Coastal Connection a year ago, and he got me over at K-Fog, and we've been giving out those buttons for a year, and it, they went like hotcakes cakes. Relating to bullying, a hundred and eight kids signed a petition at that conference that they would no longer bully or wouldn't bully, and they would actually become upstanders. And that's what we're really looking for, is not shaming or any of that kinda stuff. All we need is a kid or two to stand up when bullying's going on and say, "That's not cool." And bullies are going to be cool. And so that is our effort for October, and we wanna, we've been doing it up in Brookings since 2012, and I wanna bring it down here and help you guys, 'cause I am so impressed, honestly. And I was in advertising for thirty-five years, and this isn't PR. I went over the literacy conference that you all had a few months ago. I have not seen a city, county, and state working together so well around education. I was really impressed. They wanna change things, you all wanna change things, and it is nice to be in front of some people that are looking forward to positive change instead of giving me reasons that the research isn't valid. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I got a quick question for you, Mr. Clay. What is the significance of the semicolon?
Okay. Thank you. As you might see, what it is, is when someone commits suicide, they put a period at the end of their life. And this campaign started by a young woman in the Midwest in 2013, her dad committed suicide. And she decided to start this campaign. And it's for people who, I did not attempt, I was really close to it, um, and people like us that were really there, and we decided not to put a period there, but to put a semicolon. And this shirt says, "I'm still here." I've got several other sayings, too. But it's, wearing a button signifies to people that I'm open to listen. And that's what we need in this community, and all communities are people that are willing to sit down with somebody, ask, "Are you okay? And let's, let's talk this through," 'cause that simple gesture can save a life.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, my, my kids came in, and I actually have one of these buttons on my desk at the school, and I was just wondering what it was. And now the significance, it's so much more to me. I'll just display it all the time. Thank you. Okay, we are now going on to our consent calendar. We have five items on the consent calendar. We have July eighteenth, 2016 council meeting minutes, recommendation improved regular meeting minutes from the July, I will go for the recommendations, warrant claims list, we have the payroll report, we have the hazardous mitigation grant authorizing agent appointment, and we have the budget to actual for the month of July 2016. So we have five items on the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back here to the council. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Besides the, the meeting minutes had myself closing the last meeting, that might just need to be a change on that, 'cause I was not here. Mr. In score was.
I did, I did invoke your presence as we closed.
There you go. Okay, so you put me in, and I closed the meeting in absentee. There you go. All right, any other discussion? We had a move?
We can approve with the correction now.
All right, thank you.
Second.
And we have a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem in score?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. All right, now we are on to our reports and presentations. Item number eight, we have a presentation by Greg Jacobs, Engineering Project Manor and Results of the Youth Passways Urban Forestry Project. Mr. Jacobs, come on up.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. So I was here last month, and we did a presentation about the project that we're working on with the youth training academy. And tonight, we have two of the participants here. We have Matt Hamm and Kevin Vu, and they're gonna give a presentation on their project. So I am going to turn it over to them and let them show you what they accomplished. All right.
Excellent. Gentlemen, come on up.
Hello, everyone, I'm Matt Hamm, and this is Kevin Vu, and we're part of the YTA program that happened just recently. Uh, we were on the urban forestry projects for beautification of the Mason Mall area. Um, for those of you who don't know, the Mason Mall area had six planters in it, or has six planters in it, that had eucalyptus trees that were really just dead and decrepit, and created a very unattractive site for the surrounding businesses. And so we were, um, our job was to get rid of the trees and then find a way to use the allotted plants that we had and kinda beautify the area and make it look nice. And so we accomplished.
Some of the things we had to consider was, were actually what type of plants we needed. So Greg informed us on xeriscaping and some plants that were efficient in terms of water usage, and so we could get their irrigation system going and therefore be well-kept.
And so for the first two or three days, yeah, three days, it was assessment and planning. Uh, we went to the site and looked at the trees, we took measurements of the pots and pictures. And then day two was some planning, we drew out the planters and any, um, just designs for the plants to lay them out. And day three was kind of a continuation of that. We made a final plan, which you can see in that kind of big picture. Uh, we have a, the littler, the smaller, um, planters, and then the big planter. Um, we have just little, um, uh, sorry.
Oh, okay. You're lacking the word for it.
Yeah.
All right, so, although we did have these really well, like, designed, and like, it looked pretty efficient from a concept view, we also didn't consider the actual application sometimes, so, so we did encounter some problems like, like electrical lines, and so we had to work around that. So a lot of the planters, well, at least some of them that had, um, electrical lines going through them or water pipes, we had to, um, pretty much change the amount of plants we actually allotted into these planters itself. Yeah, so basically, proposal and like procurements, uh, it was pretty much just a list of what we needed to have in terms of like addressing the problems and what types of plants we decided on, um, using in, in the planters, basically.
For the proposal and procurements, since the plants were already purchased, these are more of a, kind of a mock proposal and procurement just for us to get practice with it, which was actually really, um, a good, um, practice. For the procurements, it was, we took the price that was already given, the ones that we already bought, and, or got down two more just to compare them, and we did find that all the plants that we did buy were the cheapest ones we could get. And then here we go into the actual project. Day six was the first day of the, actually getting into work. The city came in and pulled out the trees and surrounding shrubs and bushes for planter one. There was no trees in it, it was only some ground covers and some weeds. So it was a very quick excavation of just the top soil and other plants.
For planter two, if you observe, uh, there's really just one completely stunted and dead tree right there. And I have to give Greg some credit because of the fact that he informed us very well of like what the red markings and white markings were, so red stood for electrical lines, and so we also, he was very informative of what we should and shouldn't touch in planter two. So, yeah.
Basically, don't touch anything that's spray painted.
Yeah.
And for planter three, it was one of the bigger trees, it was, it had more overgrown, but it did prove that it wasn't much of a problem for the backhoe.
Another great thing to notice about these planters and the removal picture itself is that these crews, although, they were very efficient in terms of what they did, none of the planters were damaged in any way, and that was completely amazing, because we would have had extra plants to work with, and that's not too pretty.
And a broken planter.
Yeah.
In planter five, this one has, um, the plumbing and irrigation kind of right in it, and so it was kind of a concern for us, but it came out pretty easily. Uh, there's only one tree that was, again, stunted and dead, and I don't think there's any other plants in the planter. And then for planter six, this is the big one, it's got two trees, it had a species of invasive grass, ground cover, and a few other weeds, and it proved to be pretty easy.
It was simple, because ironically, most of the plants were very small, in a large container for some reason, and, um, another weird thing was that, like, there were, it wasn't very filled either compared to that one other planter, I guess, like, planter three, it had this very large tree for some reason, too.
Yeah. And so after the plant, the eucalyptus trees were taken out, we came, came back the next day, and pre, and the next one as well, to start prepping the soil for the plants, which was just us taking bags of soil and then spraying them around, making sure there's no roots in the planter still, uh, make sure the irrigation and the sprinkler systems are okay. And then day eight was the planning. We got, we have, um, sun roses, azaleas, and lavender plants that all went in fairly easy, and it was a pretty fun day that day.
Yeah, although I have to, um, admit, there were still some roots that we can't, we can't efficiently take out, because it would take a lot of the resource and time. But it is, it is also notable that they will decompose. We just hope that they don't come back. Hope.
And we have another problem.
Yeah.
And then for the last days, it was just finalizing everything. Uh, the city crew came back in for, I think, planter two or three to redo some of the, there's a, there's a problem with the irrigation and electrical, so they had to kinda take out the plants and fix it, but, so we came back the next day and put in all the plants. Then the lavender was put in, because that was, um, it didn't come in in time. And we finished putting down the rest of the mulch, and now we have new planters in the Mason Mall.
Excellent. Yeah, I went walking by there, and they look great. It's definitely an improvement on there. Opens up the area, too, because all those dead trees were there, which will give our tourists who stop at the Redwood National Parks, they'll be able to see more into downtown, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's a really definite improvement. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any questions for these young gentlemen? All right. Clay? We've got the flower boxes in the rest of the city.
Gotta work on those now. Yeah.
And I attended the, your, your function for all the groups on Thursday, and it was a great event, and so thank you for all your hard work. And then the next day, Friday morning, I took some, a couple of pictures of, um, some of the planters and posted them on one of my Facebook pages, and, and that was the most hits I've gotten on, was that, that particular post was, that was, it seemed like more people were interested about the planters on, at the Mason Mall than anything else I posted on that particular. So, so I want you to know that you're very popular. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And to you.
Thank you very much. And, and please thank the rest of the crews, and thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Okay, we do have another presentation by the community food council on food truck barriers and city limits. Come on up.
Can we move this, like, onto the desk or something?
Sure. Full disclosure, these two have been my students, and I've worked with this guy in the past.
Do they still have to call you Mr. Gastineau, or is it Ron right now?
Oh, Mr. Gastineau.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Yeah, right. So, good evening. We're also with the annual youth training academy. I'm Alex Vollman, Hunter Stancliff, and Kyle Vang. And as you know, our And as you know, our project was centered around food trucks in Crescent City. So I think, you know, to really understand the context of food trucks in Crescent City today, it's best to go into some of the history of that beforehand. So take it away, Hunter. Kyle.
So mobile food vendors emerged in the late 1800s, which they've, which means they fed ranch cattle drivers. And then, then mobile food vendors soon went into city limit, cities, and so I feel feeding journalists, businessmen, and other professionals. And in 1900s, mobile food vendors, basically, so, started to sell other things like ice cream for kids, and, and also food trucks were a common food, a common lunchstop for blue collar workers that work in factories and construction sites. The modern food, but, mobile food industries emerged as a trendy way for unemployed chefs to work at food trucks. After the recession of 2008, large cities like Portland and New York ceased, or have cultivated, cultivated food trucks as a cultural phenomenon. And eat, and every, in, in each state in the US, each community serving a easy access to a collateral and unique meals. And Hunter.
It's no, it's no secret that downtown Crescent City is in need of revitalization. A 2016 article from the Delano Trip Kit titled Downtown Crescent City: Empty Storefronts detailed the chronic symptom of our less-than-busy downtown. The article states that, oh, twenty-seven empty buildings may not seem like a lot, but they're all centralized in downtown, like on Front Street and areas. Food trucks have the, are one mechanism with the potential to help downtown be more vibrant and feed the community. As food trucks have recently swept the nation's food economy as an alternative to fast food, we were, our cause is inspired by one simple question, why doesn't Crescent, Crescent City have a bustling food truck industry?
We partnered with Brittany Reimer of the Community Food Council to critically examine this question through an analysis of the Crescent City Municipal Code, surveys to the Youth Training Academy, and interviews with interested community members. We walked away from our research with very clear recommendations for the council that we're excited to share tonight, but before we get into those, I'm going to go through our research process and explain what some of our findings were.
There were, we read two articles from the National League of Cities titled Food on Wheels: Mobile Vending Goes Mainstream, and the other being Case Study: On-the-Go Insights Into Food Truck Regulation in US Cities. Both covered four major areas of concern for the food trucks: economic activity, public space, and public health and public safety. These reports use real-life examples from cities with robust networks of mobile food vendors. Food on Wheels notes a complicated permitting process as the major economic hurdle facing the emerging mobile food vendor market. Excessive regulation has led to a complicated permitting process. For instance, the On-the-Go article has a quote that says, "To facilitate growth, the city of Austin streamlined the permitting process for mobile food vendors, which previously required vendors to deal with multiple departments for all appropriate permits." They made it just one simple sheet. And if, as the network grows, they need more space, and the theme between the two, or one of the themes, was that if there's a space in a city for food trucks to be at, use that space for them.
So in order to get, gauge demanded, our group's next step was to survey colleagues within the 2016 Annual YTA. The first question was, on a scale of one to five, how much would they enjoy seeing a food truck? Five designated as high interest, one designated as low interest, and our survey had zero, no-interested responses, and thirty-nine high-interested responses. Our second, our next question was, would a food truck benefit the community? Which forty-eight said yes, and two said no. On, and on the benefit of a food truck can benefit our community, one quote of a, of a participant who surveyed, who took the survey, said, "A food truck would help, because in Crescent City, all you see is fast food places. We want something different, and I believe a food truck can help." The third question was, ask to list location, which was an open and, open question, ended a, open-ended question. Most of our students were from Donor High, so Donor High School was the most popular one, but there were other locations such as the beaches, the fairgrounds, and downtown. And our last question was, the time of day, which was morning, noon, afternoon, and evening. Our participants were also given other, which was another open-ended question. The most popular one was afternoon for lunch, and, that's it.
So as I mentioned earlier, aside from just surveying the YTA participants and reading two very thick packets, we also got out in the community a little bit and asked people what their thoughts were. The downtown divas, make some noise ladies.
They were very supportive of food trucks in Crescent City. We talked with Gary Overstreet, the owner of Beach Bums, which is a hot dog stand. Gary said, "The three organizations," meaning the city, county, and state governments, "need to work together as a unit and work with the vendor." Thomasini's, a restaurant downtown, you know, the owner of that said, or he suggested that food trucks would be very good for the community. It's definitely one of those, a rising tide lifts all boats, kinds of feelings from him. It was really Christina's was the only restaurant that we interviewed that really seemed a little ambivalent or hesitant, because obviously there'll be increased competition. But other than that, I think people are looking forward to food trucks. So before I get to the last leg of our findings and whatnot, I would just like to mention that this wasn't a, you know, outside project with a lot of digging up planters and really working with the city in that regard. This was a lot of time in front of a computer, a lot of time making phone calls, a lot of typing. So this is, you know, the energy of our report, this is what we're excited to do. So our research concluded with a review of the Crescent City Municipal Code. Chapter 5.44 of that code is all about mobile food vendors, and that in and of itself was very progressive of the city. Typically, in small towns or really cities across America, you're not going to find a section specifically for a mobile food vendor. So that made our research pretty easy to get through in and of itself. So that section includes, you know, a lot of definitions, defines a mobile vendor, it defines a push cart, it defines a peddler, and even lists approved locations. While the chapter does have several common sense ideas, you know, you're not allowed to sell non-alcoholic beverages. Wait, yeah, not allowed, or, yep. You have to have a trash can. Did I get that wrong, Hunter? Don't sell alcohol if you're a mobile food vendor. Vendors have to have a trash can available, and vendors can't sell to customers in a moving car. I was fond of that one. We found a lot of unnecessary restraints. The first of these is the extremely narrow list of public ways available to mobile food vendors. Public way in the chapter is defined as, "All that area dedicated to public use and shall include, but not limited to, roadways, parkways trips, parking lots, city parks, alleys and sidewalks." That's Section 5.44.020F. Limits that, you know, those areas to the concrete slab located just south of Front and G Streets in cities, in the city's beachfront park. Only self-contained, non-motorized mobile vending operations shall be allowed at this location, and each permittee shall only be allowed to utilize a ten-foot area. And two, within certain designated areas along Howe Drive and in the parking lot just south of the city's swimming pool. Such areas to be designated by the chief of police after reviewing any traffic problems which might be generated. So right off the bat, we found, can operate off the side of the road and just anywhere. It's limited to really those public spaces. So the next barrier is the codified prohibition of operating a food truck after dark. That is 5.44.707F, which states, "All push carts, stands, vending vehicles, or other mobile vending operations must be completely removed from these premises by at least sunset and may not be placed on any location before sunrise." The chapter mentions in the introduction to the chapter that it wants to eliminate unfair competition between food trucks and restaurants, and we feel that not being allowed to compete at the same time as your competitors automatically creates unfair competition for mobile food vendors. But the most restraining regulation, the big one, and if you guys only changed this, I mean, there'd still be a lot of work to do, but we'd be pretty pleased, is Section 5.44.050G, which reads, "No permit shall be issued for a mobile vending operation within two hundred feet of any business of a substantially similar nature, which already holds a license pursuant to Chapter 5.16 of this code, except at the locations authorized in 5.44.030B." Basically, you're not allowed to operate within two hundred feet of a restaurant. That's the big aha moment when we read that, because all the restaurants are in all the places that would be great for a food truck. And that cuts off Third Street, cuts off Fourth Street, cuts off the entire 101 corridor, all because there's a lot of restaurants in those areas, particularly fast food restaurants. So this report, the opportunity to present it to this council on this night, is only the beginning of the discussion on mobile food vendors. More public discussions, more polls, more interviews must take place before a comprehensive reform of municipal policies can be attained. However, in the short run, we urge the council to consider the following changes to 5.44. Number one is expand the list of public ways available to mobile food vendors. Number two would be to establish a solid curfew, instead of leaving the hours of operation open from sunup to sundown. And three would be to reduce the limit mobile food vendors can operate within a restaurant from two hundred feet to only fifty feet. And then, these guys are going to close it up for us.
So, the city should keep the debate over food trucks alive by holding a forum on the issue. Reaching out to the, out to restaurants is also paramount to producing an incredible policy. The city needs to gain input from food trucks, restaurants, and people who want a food truck at Crescent City. So basically, like, surveying or interviewing communities. The next one is, last, next one is, the city must find ways to make the process, the process of opening food truck simpler. Potential mobile food vendors should be provided with a checklist, a pertinent regulations and licenses. We also encourage the city to appoint a one-person to facilitate a potential vendors experience with starting a food truck.
Mobile food vendors can be placid to the community's hunger for more vibrant, for a more vibrant downtown, while literally feeding the community. A robust network of food trucks encourages the city would boost the economy, promote cultural diversity, and provide easy access to hot meals. The Community Food Council for Adjacent Tribal Lands, the downtown divas, and other community organizations and individuals are all very excited for the promise the future of Crescent City, of feeding Crescent City holds. Food trucks can and should be part of that future.
Excellent job, gentlemen. All right, is there any questions from the council for these gentlemen? Any comments?
I will just say, thank you. You guys did a great job. And we have, the council, the planning commission and the council actually took a bite at this back in 2007, and some of these things didn't ever get codified. So it will be pleasing for you guys to know of the three recommendations. One of them is actually addressed in the proposed ordinance that's not on the books, and that is expanding some of the, the areas, as far as public areas. The other two, I think, are things that are certainly good ideas and worthy of our discussion, and I think it's a great idea that you guys took this project to, to put together something that, that would be a good discussion for us as a, as a community to have. You guys did a great job. But just so you know, there was work on this, didn't get finished, but because of you guys as choosing this project, it brings it back to an impetus to us to get the work going again. So thank you. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
When you did your survey, did you actually talk to any food truck vendors that wanted to come into the city that had not done so, or had a proposal to come into the city?
You mean, potential vendors?
Potential vendors, yeah.
No, actually Keith Owensby was a potential vendor that we talked with. He moved down to Humboldt, and he just, you know, he had mentioned that it was just difficult to get all of the process, just all of the bureaucratic stuff, done. Gary Overstreet with Beach Bums said the city was not as accommodating as they could be, neither was the county, so he ended up going all the way down to Sacramento to get the permits that he needed. Felt that there could have been an easier way to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, what, just curious, what prompted you to look into food trucks? One of you guys could be a mobile chef.
What prompted us? Like we had mentioned, it's been something that's been going on in the community for a while, and when there was this project there for the Youth Training Academy, it seemed like a very smart project to do. I've always been very focused on civic engagement and seeing that it's concrete, you know, actual change could happen. These are all very real recommendations, they're not radical in any way, and they're, you know, stuff that we ripped right out of the city municipal code.
Alex?
Thank you.
Yeah, Catherine?
Thanks for all the hard work, and I'm appreciative of the heightened awareness. I'm a huge fan of the, of food trucks. I believe that that gives business owners a real opportunity to start a business and to grow, and bring more businesses into the city. I'm wondering if you talked to any planning commissioners, and you didn't talk to any city council members, right?
No, we didn't have the chance to talk with council members. We talked with, was it that guy? No, in an email, let's see, the community.
Eric.
Yeah, we sent you, yeah, sent him an email. So, yeah, we had two weeks to really, you know, read what other cities are doing, read the code, and, you know, finally type up our seven-page report. So, you know, if we had more time, we would have loved to talk with a council member, a planning commissioner especially.
Because we, we do issue variances as well at the planning commission level for some of the regulations, when it, when it seems appropriate.
Okay.
So, just so you know.
So what would be the easiest way to get some of these things done, then? Would it be to go through the planning commission?
So what would be the easiest way to get some of these things done then? Would it be to go through the planning commission?
Well, now that we have a, you know, a more concrete and we know that we didn't get all of our ducks in a row for it, but um, and maybe we can make some adjustments so variances wouldn't be necessary. But say, um, like if somebody wanted to have a food truck during the summer and maybe they wanted to have it a little bit later, I don't know, you know, just different variances. I mean, there's different regulations that you can make appeal to the planning commission. So I just wanted you to know that
I appreciate it.
That not, all the regulations, um, we want to make, help businesses to be successful in other words. So I just wanted you to know that, okay?
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, so, but thank you for doing all that hard work. You guys did a great job and uh, I, um, Brit- Brittany?
Brittany Reimer.
I got to meet her grandparents when we were standing in line at the graduation for the youth academy and that was great fun and they're very proud of you and I can see why. So, and thanks for all the hard work that everybody did.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to remind everybody that in our beachfront park master plan on the plaza there, next to our amphitheater, we have a section that is specifically for food truck vendors. So the city is looking into the future of having vendors down in the downtown and at our events at uh, once we get our park all together, so. It's, it's one of those great things that everybody has a chance to do business in the city. Thank you, everybody, for coming in. We appreciate all the work you've done. Okay, so we are now on to communications, public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Please, Linda, come on.
Good evening, city council. My name's Linda Sutter. I live in the county. Um, I'm here tonight because when each and every one of you were elected, you took an oath to uphold all the laws of the land and the constitution. When Chief Minso became chief of police, he took an oath to uphold all the laws of the land, including the constitution. If you do not uphold these laws of the land, if you choose which laws are select, that are gonna selectively be enforced, then that is a form of government anarchy. So an example of that would be if Chief Minso pulled me over for a DUI, uh, you know, and found that I was intoxicated, I would be cuffed up. DA would prosecute me to the full extent of the law and I would, and uh, Aderson would lock the key and throw it away because I'm politically active in this community and I expect such. But when a city council member is found to be intoxicated in the midday and naked and walking in public and she is not held to that same structure, that to me is governmental anarchy. That needs to be stopped. I don't appreciate it. I don't know why you're still as a council member, Ms. Murray, and I certainly wouldn't run for supervisor. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, please? Come on up.
Positive note. I'm sorry that the youth training academy didn't stay to hear this though because this is for them. But um, Sidney Clinton, I'm here representing the nonprofit Crescent City Downtown Divas. As you all know, our mission is to promote our downtown as a vibrant destination for residents and visitors to gather, shop, work, and enjoy. Also, as the current board president, I am representing the Crescent City Delnar County Chamber of Commerce whose mission statement includes support, development, and advocating for economic development. Toward this goal, the Downtown Divas and the Chamber of Commerce support the changes to the mobile food vendor laws proposed by the youth training academy. We believe restructuring the laws so that our city is welcoming to food trucks is a way to re-energize our downtown, creating an interesting and diverse atmosphere for our community and visitors. We hope you will consider sooner than later updating the mobile food vendor regulations and modify the restrictions on location and times. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please, come on up.
Good evening. I am a county resident. I am Lisa McCowen. I am president of the Downtown Divas. Good evening, all of you folks. Pastor. So just really quick, we are super excited. We just wanted to give you a quick report about the downtown farmer's market. We are, feel that it has been very, very successful. For instance, this Wednesday, we are maxed out in our spaces, so that's awesome. And in addition, we want to take the time to thank the city for working with us on the Tessa. Thank you for letting us have our Wednesdays to ourselves. We appreciate those efforts. I think it's really mattered and um so we're just moving forward. I mean, it's growing. It's maxed out. That's where we're at right now. So moving on to live from downtown, it's First Friday. We are very pleased, extremely pleased, um, actually pleasantly surprised at the turnout that we had considering that it was also fair time. You know, people sometimes are narrow-minded here, but our community made a conscious effort to come out for it and support what was happening downtown and just in one word, we felt it was amazing. So we thank you all. That's it.
Thank you. I did attend First Fridays and it was really, and it was awesome. The sun came out. Excellent. Okay, any other public comment? Please, come on up.
Hello, my name's Brittany Reimer and I'm the food programs director for Building Healthy Communities Delnorton Adjacent Tribal Lands. And I was involved in helping getting the food trucks youth training academy project off the ground. Um, I also run a group called the Community Food Council for Delnorton Adjacent Tribal Lands. That's a group of about thirty members that's been meeting every once a month for the past five years or so. Um, and that group sees a huge potential in cultivating a more vibrant local food economy as a way to help create more economic activity within Crescent City and the county at large. I think in a small community like this, being able to keep dollars in the city is essential for a healthy economy and that one strong way that we're able to do that is by having more food producers in our area. And food trucks ever since the economic downturn in 2008 have been shown to be a really great way um, to create a vibrant local food economy. So I hope you'll consider this as a serious item for discussion for the city council as a way to really generate economic activity, cultivate a more diverse food culture in the area, and bring more life into downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? All right, so you know other public comment? A closed public comment? Uh, we were going to adjourn to the housing authority, but we have council outlet for lack of items and we were gonna adjourn to the successor agency, but we canceled that for lack of items.
Before you guys leave, because I didn't figure you'd stay for all the exciting stuff, I just want to, I, I would normally say this at the end, but, but I just want you guys to know, ladies, divas, uh, having seen the, some of the, the history with, with the dysfunction, not placing blame, but the dysfunction with bid and how we couldn't come together and get some things done, even though there were people on both sides who I genuinely think love this community and love downtown, I just want to personally tell you thank you for the work you've done. You've gotten more stuff accomplished and oftentimes it's true, when government gets out of the way and, and the citizens take ownership over things, great things happen. And so, since I, I know you guys were all gonna go home and turn your computers on and watch the rest of the meeting, but just in case, I just wanted to publicly tell you all, thank you for the work you're doing. You're doing a fantastic job. I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we did not go to the housing authority or the successor agency. We have no public hearings. We're going on a continuing business. Item number twelve, council policy and procedure, and I think Ms. Scott is gonna be talking to us about that. We have procedures.
Mayor Gasnow, members of the council, good evening. Okay, round three. Maybe it'll be the last round. I don't know yet, but um, so we've had this council policy and procedure document in front of you a couple of times now. And uh, so I've tried to listen to your recommendations, have worked with the ad hoc committee and I thank council members Holly and Short for spending some extra time with me on this document. And so um, I have a proposed document for adoption unless you have further direction for me. Would you like me to go through each piece that is in here again for the last kind of review? Highlight.
Hi, just bullet points.
Just kind of bullet points.
Yeah.
Code of Ethics is the one thing that's really not finalized and working with the ad hoc committee and discussing really how important code of ethics is and how the first round of code of ethics came about and we're kind of in a different climate now, really wanted to take the time to do this right. And uh, so looked at a code ethics policy that's set by the city of Riverside that's really thorough and provides not just kind of the code, but also provides, you know, what to do if that code fails. And um, so that work is not done yet, but the code is just referenced in this document. So that's something that we can easily come back with a resolution and attach. So moving on from that, the term of office for mayor, mayor pro tem, uh, it had stated before, it had two different weekends really to put people into positions um, after they got into their new offices. This is just to kind of clear that section up. Uh, we had talked about changing the meeting schedule. After doing some research, it's not really feasible. Uh, we'd settled on maybe Thursday evening, but there's already other meetings here on Thursday evenings. So just leave that one alone. Placing items on the agenda, um, it wasn't really clear before about how to go about that process and the process, the way it was described, wasn't really the way that we were doing it. And so uh, just changed this resolution to reflect what we were doing and give people some clear direction about how to place items on the agenda and who they need to go to. Order of Business, uh, this one shakes things up a little bit just in what order we hold the, the council meeting items uh, to try to get people out of here a little quicker if they don't want to stay and um, to put things in a good order. So in case, you know, we've got an employment contract that we can do an oath after that instead of before, so it's not, doesn't have that kind of funky order to it. Conducting business is a late hour. Uh, it was noted that perhaps that was already taken care of in Rosenberg's. It's laid out pretty well in Rosenberg, so we can just leave that alone. City manager code of ethics, uh, you thought that was a good idea, so we went ahead and wrote a resolution to adopt that. Financial matters, this one, I really have to give a lot of credit to Ms. Bridget Lacy. This policy was kind of confusing. There was separate things that were kind of mushed together into one policy that really should have been separated into two policies. And I don't understand the first thing about tax laws and all of that and she is, uh, she's one smart gal. So she tackled this and spent some time on it and um, not only, you know, split these into two procedures like they should have been, updated them to all the current laws and then place some reference codes in there for you. So if you want to go and look at those laws in more detail, the information's right there and readily available. So unless there are questions further, comments further?
I, I just want to say what a thorough job you did. This is a lot of work and the timing really is perfect because we're going to have some more city council members sitting up here. They're gonna have one place to go to get the answers that they need and so that's gonna be very helpful to them, I think. Um, on page, uh, let's see, ten? No, eleven. Uh, there's just one, one word you omitted. It says, "Quite contrary, council members." And they're probably talking about Mr. En- Mr. Enscore is probably who you're talking about, but uh, quite, you might, I think you want to say "to the contrary" or "quite the con-" you're just missing a modifier in "quite contrary."
Which, which section?
This is the, the, be the first full paragraph in the last sentence.
Okay.
Okay, it's not, it's not, from a content perspective, it doesn't mean very much.
Yes.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to explain to uh, the council members and those in the audience, we, we have most of, of the code of ethics actually hammered out. The difficulty that we're having is uh, what we do when there's an actual violation. Some, some, some councils have a board or a, a standing committee that deals with these things, but that's ordinarily much larger jurisdictions. And, and who those people should be, what positions they should be in, since people change positions, is that really something we want to do? We, we haven't hammered that part out. Uh, so if any of you up here or anyone in the audience has some ideas, if you'd contact either Mr. Short or myself, uh, we, we can try and hammer this out before it comes back, but we're, we're, we're close to having that completed. And it's just a matter of the, the final steps on what happens when something's discovered and we need to wrestle with a fair hearing kind of an environment.
And I'd like to, to follow up on that and state that we, we did reach out to several rounds with the Redwood Division. We did reach out to Gary Milliman up in Brookings. And um, it seems like this is one of those kind of points in government where a lot of times uh, there's some language thrown in there like, you know, this will be brought to a hearing of your peers or something along those lines. But it's very rare that it reaches that point and so figuring out who those people are often doesn't, it doesn't get figured out. Um, and we would like to lay that out from the beginning, who those people are going to be so that it's very clear. So, yeah, any, any ideas and suggestions for that are definitely welcome.
I just had one question. I think it, it may have been council member Murray had a suggestion or an idea about our reporting out, um, the idea of the way that the board of supervisors, they do that usually at the beginning of the meeting as opposed to all the way at the end. Kind of the question is a lot of times we lose people and some of those things that we I just wondered if the committee talked about that idea at all? Because when I look at the order, it still has us reporting out and stuff at the end. Was that something that, that you guys discussed or just felt that it was better this way?
We hadn't really, I mean, uh, council member Murray made that suggestion and I didn't hear any other talk about it. So um, definitely would welcome some discussion on that now.
Kind of focused on the order of business in order to encourage more people to participate in the meetings, make it easier for them, you know, in a sense that they would have to spend all night here is what the, kind of the discussion. But we're certainly open to any suggestions you guys may have.
And the other, the other question that I have is in a policy and procedure manual, is it, is it even necessary for us to line out? Does it, does it, does this limit us to saying, well, you've now voted on a policy and procedure that says your order of business has to be, you know, in this order as opposed to maybe addressing it from a suggested order of business amendable or adaptable as, as necessary, whatever. I just think that, I don't want to, I don't want to, we, we may discover someplace along the line and as opposed to coming back and amending the entire document, I'd like to have flexibility for us to be able to look at the, our agenda and say, well, there may be occasions where it's better for us to do some of these things um, in a different order. I, I don't know, those, I don't know whether or not that's a possibility within the manual or if that's even a good idea.
Doesn't it have somewhere where the mayor can make changes to the order in the policy and procedures?
And I want to say, maybe correct me, I think that, does Rosenberg's address that?
I thought, I remember somewhere it says that the mayor can make adjustments to the order at the beginning of the meeting or- order at the beginning of the meeting.
I can review that, and if it's not in there, I could throw in a sentence to accommodate that.
Is prerogative, I think. Maybe it's in Rosenberg's.
That's good, then. All right, thank you. That's all I have. Good job, you guys. Good work.
Thank you. It occurred to me, too, that we're going to have to revisit this periodically. For example, we have our, I guess our work comp carriers' actual name in here, and we may change work comp carriers, and we're going to have to go in and insert a different name when that occurs. You know, so there's a few of those kind of items that we're going to need to adjust with case law and that kind of thing. But, good question.
And I kind of envision this maybe not as fluid as our strategic plan, but still something that we should review occasionally anyways, and especially since this is the first sort of trial run with it. You know, I think it'd be a good idea to come back in a year and take a review of it.
Good. Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for initiating the concept and for the Ad Hoc Committee. This is a huge amount of work, but I think it's fabulous, especially since we'll have three new council members, and it's a really good tool for everyone to have available. So, thank you very much, yeah.
Thanks.
Giving credit where credit's due, as part of the committee, we all took little pieces of homework home to do later on. Councilmember Holly came to me and said, "Hey, I have time, if you're busy, I can work on your piece." And he did. So, I have to thank Kimmy and Mr. Holly for doing the lion's share of the work.
Excellent. Okay. So, is there any public comment on this before we take action? See, no public comment. We'll close it up. We do have a recommendation to adopt the Council Policy and Procedure Manual. Anybody want to discuss anymore? Okay, do I have a motion?
Do we? Each resolution?
I have a question. Do we need to approve each separate resolution? Can we approve them as a lot?
You can do them together. You'll need to read them all out still. And then, for also reading the couple of changes to the last ordinance, I just looked at Rosenberg's, and I don't think it includes a rule allowing the chair to move business, so you might want to add, you know, add that sentence that allows flexibility for the mayor to take things out of order as he or she deems necessary or appropriate.
Would that be the Resolution 2016-14, the first one that's mentioned in the recommendation?
Um, I think that's just included in the manual that would be the last one, 2016-18.
All right. So, first thing, we just got to read all of it. I'll do it. I move we adopt Resolution Number 26, 2016-14, the Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, establishing procedures for placing items on the agenda of the City Council, and adopt Resolution 2016-15, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, establishing the mayor's and mayor pro tem per term for a period of one year and specifying the conditions thereof. And adopt Resolution 2016-16, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, binding the city manager to the International City County Management Association's Code of Ethics. And adopt Resolution 2016-17, a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, rescinding the Crescent City travel expense and use of public resources policy document, and adopting two new policies, the City of Crescent City travel policy and the City of Crescent City use of public funds policy. And also adopt Resolution 2016-18, a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adopting the policy and procedures manual for the City Council of the City of Crescent City, with one amendment or addition that allows the mayor and the mayor pro tem to change the order of the agenda.
Good job. I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you for everybody's work on that. Good job. Okay. We're here done with continuing business. We're on to new business, number 13, wastewater treatment facility administrative civil liability complaint, R1-216, 2016-0035. Mr. Vandermark.
0035.
You want me to just draw it?
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Weir. Sorry, I was looking at something else.
That's understood.
To come forward and explain this to the council.
Mr. Weir!
I understand it, but he can explain it so much more eloquently.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Vandermark. Appreciate that introduction.
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow, members of the council. So, yes, what's before tonight is related to the city's renewal of our NPVES permit renewal that we're currently going under with the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. So, the NPVES permit is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that the city has for its wastewater treatment plant. Basically, it regulates the outfall and all of the affluent parameters that we have to meet, and limitations that we have to meet in order to discharge into the ocean. The renewal period also requires that the city submit a five-year report of waste discharge report to the State Regional Board, in which they look at all of the tests that we've completed over the five-year period. So, during that five-year period, we have submitted over 14,000 tests. When they reviewed those, five of them actually exceeded the permit limit. There was two of them for what's called settable solids, and there was three of them for chlorine. So, you notice that with this, there's actually seven violations. So, the settable solids, those three had something to do with directly the ocean plan and our permit. So, the ocean plan is typically what the regional board looks at to set the limits. When they looked at our permit, they made our permit about 10 times more strict than what the ocean plan is because of our plan. We've talked to the regional board about this, so during this renewal period, they are open to at least discussions at this point of moving that back towards more of a consistent limit that's associated with the ocean plan. The other two tests that exceeded the limit were in regard to chlorine. So, that's the chlorine amount that actually is discharged out into the oceans. We had two violations of that. They look at that as a concentration level, so we exceeded the part per million of that particular instance, which is a violation. And then they take a calculation based off that one sample and calculate it into a pounds per day, and they said that that's a second violation. So, really, we were, we had two violations for a single sample on that. So, that results in the seven violations. But, again, it's a sense of context over the whole thing. We had 14,000 tests. We had really five tests that exceeded. So, if you were to look at a percentage of that, that's 99.95% of the tests we were in complete compliance with over the five-year period. We had five violations. With the violations, they are associated a penalty of $3,000 per violation, so three times seven is $21,000. What's before the council tonight is to waive our right to a hearing and authorize staff to negotiate with board staff on a settlement with this. So, what is very common with these type of things is to work with the board, and then you come up with a compliance project. Basically, a project that's directly associated with these particular violations that'll ensure that it won't happen again in the future. So, we have a project in mind, that is, to try to optimize the control strategy and increase the reliability of the chlorination system and dechlorination system at the treatment plant, which was part of our overall scheme of the treatment plant projects anyway, so we'll be able to wrap this up into a project and utilize this, what would be a fine, we'll use it towards the benefit of the greater good of the treatment plant in the city. So, with that, I have Tom Roamsburg, Utility Manager, here as well. He can help answer any technical questions if the council has any. This is a very typical processes where he researched ACLs. They seem to be a very common component of most permit renewals. Other cities in the North Coast have had much larger fines than the $21,000 the city has before.
Okay, any questions for Eric?
So, the goal is, is instead of just paying a fine, find something that will benefit the system as a whole.
That's correct, yes.
And the reality is, is that when we're talking about a success rate of 99.95, even improving that, we could still be back here five years from now and deal with this, but instead of just giving the money to the state water board, we're going to put it into the plant for the betterment of our community.
Yes, and, you know, as such, any mechanical type of plant in nature breakdowns do happen. Violations do occur, it's very common. And so, we're going to try to take this money, we're going to put it into a project to try to make our treatment plant as reliable as we can, although that is the nature of the beast.
Eric, you said in your report that the improvements would cost more than the $21,000 fine, but I don't recall you saying how much more it would cost.
So, we, what the action before the council is tonight is to go ahead and waive the hearing and have us start the settlement negotiations with the state. So, we don't have the project exactly defined, but we do want to have a project that will cover the full $21,000, so we can put all of our resources into improvements at the plant, other than giving any as far as to the state, so...
We don't know how, we don't have an estimate of how much the improvements may cost, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, but I like the idea, so.
But, we may be just shuffling some CIP stuff towards this as opposed to something else that we're working on. It's all for the betterment of the plant for the long-term future.
Exactly, and so, yeah, we'll come back to the council once we have our project scoped, have an agreement with the state. We'll let the council know exactly how much the estimate will be to complete that. But, again, it will be for a long-term solution rather than just paying a fine on a short-term problem.
Eric, given the times we're in, I need to ask kind of a redundant question. Is it safe to say that prior to the improvement and the building of the new plant, that these fines would have been more forthcoming? In other words, there are critics of the new plant, and they'll come forward and say something about this, but it would have been far, far, far worse had we not had the new plant? Is that correct?
That's correct. And I don't have the exact numbers with me, but the last time we went through this permit cycle, there was an ACL associated with that previous five-year period, and it was, it was much greater than this, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines that we were then able to put towards that particular project.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to hear that.
Again, and regardless of the fact that Mr. Holly thinks that I'm contrary, 14,000 samples, only five things, and then the state finds a way to double up two of them. 99.95% of the time, this plant is doing exactly what it's supposed to do, and that's good for our community. With all the negative that comes with it, I just think that that says something about not only the plant, but also those who work there, who manage that, who watch those systems, who do the checks and balances day in and day out. I know it's not a popular topic, but let's face it, this plant's working, and the people who are working there are doing a fantastic job. And I think that that needs to be reminded to our public of that what they are paying for is doing a darn good job. And, I hope that they recognize that, and recognize our fine staff that makes sure that that fine job is done at a 99.95% rate. Which of us can say that about anything we do?
No, and I really...
So, thank you.
I really appreciate the comments.
Thanks, Tom.
And that's, those are just the samples that we take. There's the other, you know, there's 24 hours in a day, we take some of these, they're grab samples, so they're doing an excellent job that goes well beyond even that percentage. And it's, you know, it's a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day plan. It never stops. And, you know, the operators that get the alarms at 3:00 in the morning, they get up out of bed to go take care of the alarm, so we don't have the fines. And that's really where the true benefit that the city has is.
Yeah, I was going to piggyback on that. And when you said, you know, "Some of these fines are common," I was going to go like, "No, no, not 99.95%, you know, accuracy or, you know, getting the job done." I think you meant it's common for the state to find a few little things to find, because they can't give us a perfect report.
Exactly, yes. No, it's very common with any NPVES renewal permit that you will have an ACL associated with it, at least from the research that we've done.
Okay, so, any public comment on this? All right, see, no public comment. The recommendation here is to authorize the city manager, as it doesn't need to choose an option. So, we just need to give you some direction, is that correct, sir? All right. We, I think council is in agreement that we would like to forward this money onto a project for helping to improve our plant and go that direction. Yeah, door number four.
So, it's option two of their settlement letter that the city manager will sign.
So, basically, take this settlement and try to get it back to us so we can improve our plant.
Exactly.
Okay. Given the fact that this involves money, wouldn't it be better that we actually took a motion on this action?
All right, let's do it.
Then I move that we authorize the city manager, as he's designated, to choose the option of waiving the 90-day hearing requirement in order to initiate settlement discussions in regard to administrative civil liability, number R120160035.
Do we need to put the option into the motion of what we want to do? Okay.
I'll second that.
All right.
Let him choose.
Okay, yeah, let him choose. As we said, which one we want. Okay, can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you very much for your work on that, and great job.
Great job.
Okay. Item number 14, a new business update on Find Your Park, Crescent City, and associated budget adjustment. I believe Ms. Scott's coming up to talk to us about that one, is that correct, Mr. Vandermark? Thank you.
We've almost found our park. We're getting close. So, the planning team for Find Your Park, which consists of, I haven't even counted at this point, but there's, you know, somewhere in the 20, 30 range of different organizations, agencies, nonprofits, and individuals that are helping out with this thing. They've been working very hard, and as you can see in the attachments, we have a lot of fun things planned. And, the whole community has really come together for this. People are doing things for free when they can, they're giving us discounts if they can't. People are pitching in and contributing, and it's just been a great thing to be a part of. And, so, I come here with good news, and that good news is people are donating to help cover some of the costs. But, in order to formally receive those donations and expend those donations, we need to do a budget adjustment, which is what the resolution is here to cover. And, so, you know, there are some, the not-so-p pretty behind-the-scenes things that go on. The county has helped out with covering some of the costs for, like, porta-potties and transportation, and given us some contingency money. Lithia Motors has stepped up with a sizable marketing contribution for us, which is going to allow us to market this event in Eureka, Arcata, Medford, Del Norte, and Currie Counties. And Pacific Power stepped up and also gave us a transportation donation, which is going to allow for free park-and-ride on Saturday, and so people can park at the harbor or at the fairgrounds, and catch a shuttle bus every 15 to 20 minutes, starting at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and going back anytime till 8:00 p.m. at night. So, it's just going to not only make things fun, but there's going to be lots of room to have that fun. We're going to keep the congestion out of downtown, so people can still walk around and enjoy all of our great shops and our restaurants, and do something new while they're at it. So, I don't know if you have any questions or comments about it?
We're three weeks away, isn't it?
It's getting close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to happen.
It's going to happen. At this point, there's no stopping the train.
Okay, any comments?
I just have a, maybe a suggestion. I know that the, in the analysis, in the fiscal analysis, that the, the projection is that to... the fiscal analysis, that the, the projection is that to expand the budget allocation to sixty-five-hundred dollars, even though there's, right, currently, there's fifty-five-hundred dollars worth of donation coming in, with the idea that a thousand dollars more might come in, we don't, there won't be time to come back to us in case there's some contingencies. And, and I called and asked Ms. Scott whether or not she anticipated, that she knew that there were more donations possibly coming in, and there's not anything guaranteed that's coming in. And I think that no more investment than the city's made. We have made a huge administrative investment in time, but we haven't got a big financial investment in this, this event. I think it would be a good idea for the council to provide that thousand dollars as a contingent fund, so that if there's things that come up, if the donation doesn't come in, there is no contingency fund. If there's no other donations, I mean, we're, we're in essence approving the possibility that a thousand more dollars might come in, and if it does, it could be used for contingencies. But there is no contingencies, we're not going to meet again before this. I'd like to, to consider, and maybe our finance director can, can clarify how we might do that, but I think it would be good for us to provide a contingency fund for this project of a thousand dollars. So, I don't know if Mr. Lever might could give us some help, if that's a possibility, and then the council could weigh in on that, maybe?
And before I hand this over real quick, I just would like to say that I do not expect there to be other costs. At this point, I feel like our bases are covered, but this is also my first rodeo. So, I don't know what might rear its ugly head at the last minute. So, it would be nice to have a little bit of a cushion.
Thank you. Ms. Lever?
Good evening, mayor and council members. It would be pretty straightforward, if you want to amend the resolution, we could increase the council budget by a thousand dollars, which would only be used if needed for this project.
Okay, great.
You take it out of our travel funds.
Which we have not used very...
Yes, we have not used our travel funds at all.
I mean, that's all part of the same fund, right? Or not?
Yes, it's all, it's all general fund.
Okay. Well, then, I would, I would just like the council to weigh in on it, but I would certainly like to see us provide that, that thousand dollars of contingency out of the council budget, if, if we could get agreement on doing that.
I think it's prudent. I agree, the first rodeo never does go very well.
Well, that's only for the people behind the scenes. The rest of us love the event, we don't think anything's wrong, but on the backside, it's always one of those.
It's a point of order, but it's not an action item, can we do that? I just wanted, technically, is that okay, if we put that on?
Well, there is a, approve a budget adjustment on there, so we do have to do an action on it.
Yeah, I think we would need to amend, you do it by amending the resolution that's in front of you.
So, we could do that, okay.
Correct, okay.
Alright, before we do that, is there any public comment? Yes, come on up. Oh, here, please repeat that in the microphone for...
Steve of here Crescent City resident. I would like to see the city council approve a thousand dollars, but then still allow a little bit of buffer in case some further donations from exterior places come in. That way, you, you guys are doing your part of covering that contingency in case those don't come in, but it leaves room that in case community members or something want to still help, they can, and you don't have to come back, like you said, as you're not going to have the time, so...
Thank you. Alright. Let's see, so we did the similar as when we were working with Shoreline RV, when we had the hundred-thousand-dollar contingency, is that correct? Where if they needed to use it, they would use it, and if not, it would stay in the general fund. Am I on the ball there? Am I close? Am I in the court?
Yeah, I think that would work.
So, Ms. Rice, could we simply add a whereas there, if we, at the, at the end of the sixty-five-hundred, could we just add a whereas that says something to the effect that whereas unexpected expenses may occur prior, or for this event, the council provides from its council budget up to a thousand dollars? Because we don't want to change the sixty-five-hundred, we don't want to include that in the sixty-five-hundred, because then we, we close the door for somebody writing a thousand-dollar check. Or we change it to seventy-five-hundred, and clarify that a thousand of that comes from the council budget? Which, which you prefer?
If you, yeah, if you want that allowance up to seventy-five-hundred, then you would need to amend both the whereas clause and the resolved clause to, say, seventy-five-hundred, and then also include that a thousand of that is to come from the council budget. So, that would still leave you a thousand dollars that, you know, the public or the community could donate in.
So, if we, if it said whereas expected donations are expended, are expected up to a total of seventy-five-hundred, seventy-five-hundred dollars with the potential, or with the, the allocation of up to a thousand dollars from council, the council budget? Is that what, is that what you're saying? Or would it be better just to have a separate, a separate statement?
Yeah, the most important, the most important location to have that thousand dollars from the council budget would actually be in your resolved clause, because that's your action clause.
Okay.
So, I would recommend changing the sixty-five-hundred-dollar figures to seventy-five-hundred dollars, and adding that one thousand be allocated from the council budget.
And if we don't spend it, it's good.
Did I understand you, Councilor, that we can't have a thousand dollars?
Exactly, yeah. No, but I just, yeah, no, absolutely not. We'll, we'll take the free money first. But that, that's why I asked Ms. Scott whether or not she had anybody that she was anticipating giving that, and since there were some, well, maybes, but no one really committed to that, I just felt like we should provide the potential for that, if there was something. So, however, however we need to word it correctly, that, that was, that was my intent, yes, spend the money, donated money first. That's always good.
Right, even though the line item says seventy-five-hundred, we don't have to spend all seventy-five-hundred.
No, we do not.
Okay, who wants to take a crack at this?
So, do you, do you, do you have something for us, Ms. Scott, since you're the one that's going to benefit this, if necessary? Would you write, would you mind reading to me what I meant? Or not? Or I could try one more time? I don't mind keeping trying.
I don't know that I have the wording good. I have the, the concept down, that you would like to provide a thousand dollars in contingency funds from the council budget, to make available a thousand dollars of contingency funds from the council budget, and to amend the total clause, the total adjustment to up to seventy-five-hundred dollars to accommodate potential donors and the contingency from the council. It's getting closer, maybe.
What's our finance director say? Is that good wording? We can't, you know, write checks, we can't cash.
Right, so from a finance perspective, what's important is that you are authorizing us to increase the expense budget by a total of up to seventy-five-hundred dollars, and the revenue budget, which would be the outside donations, by sixty-five-hundred dollars. That would be what I need.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. Because we could spend seventy-five-hundred, and our revenue would be sixty-five-hundred plus the thousand dollars contingency.
Yes.
Alright, basic math, we love it. What do we have?
Is it enough? I mean, do we have to get the exact wording, or can we say with an amendment, authorizing the increase of the expense budget up to seventy-five-hundred, and the revenue budget up to sixty-five-hundred, and work out the details later?
Yeah, as long, as long as the direction of the amendment is very clear, then the word, yeah, the, the exact wording can be refined. But I would also include that that they're authorizing the thousand dollars from the, up to a thousand dollars from the, from the council budget for contingency. Make sure that's included.
I think I got it. So, we're amending the, the income budget to seventy-five, no, to sixty-five-hundred, and then the expenses line item to seventy-five. Piece of cake.
With a thousand-dollar difference coming from the council budget?
Yes, with a thousand dollars. Okay, so we got to get a, a motion on that resolution there.
I make that motion.
I second that motion. Is that good enough, council?
Sort of some trepidation.
Crystal clear.
Crystal clear, okay. Let me repeat it.
Please don't.
So, we are going to approve the budget adjustment to receive and spend funds associated with the Find Your Park Crescent City 2016 event, to increase the income line item to sixty-five-hundred, and the expense line item to seventy-five-hundred, with the one-thousand dollars contingency coming from the council budget. Yes?
Well said, yes, that's what I said.
Alright, there we are. So, we have a, a motion and a second, and you got to remember, people, this is government, has to be exact, and so, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on that, and thank you, Ms. Lever, for your clarification. Of course, always thank you, Ms. Rice, for your clarification. Okay, we are on item number fifteen. Vehicle abatement program, Mr. Vandemar? You mean, that guy?
This guy.
That guy, that guy.
Thank you. So, here's a little, little quick background, in nineteen-ninety, the state legislator passed, enacted legislation allowing for the formation of these county-based vehicle abatement programs. Then nineteen-ninety-six, the county and the city formulated the Del Norte County Vehicle Abatement Program. Within the last ten years, the program has received about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars in funding, which allowed for the removal of about nine-hundred-and-seventy-two vehicles. That's quite a bit in the last ten years. So, authority for the extension of this program, the program is extended every ten years. Funding comes from a one-dollar tax, registration tax on all vehicles registered within Del Norte County. But again, the authority for the ten-year extension can be found in vehicle code ninety-two fifty-point-seven, which basically states that counties can extend these programs every ten years by resolution, but they also need a resolution by cities that have the majority in the incorporated population. Being that Crescent City is the only incorporated city in the county, therefore, it requires a resolution from the city as well. So, then what we're asking for tonight is a resolution to extend the vehicle abatement program for another ten years. It's set to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, so this will therefore extend the program until twenty-twenty-seven. Currently, I'd say the program, about seventy-five percent of the vehicles are towed out of the county, and about twenty-five percent roughly within the city. So, the program works great, staff highly supports this program, it helps us out quite a bit. As you realize, abandoned vehicles are a huge blight on our community, and they can pop up anywhere and at any time.
Great. Yeah, I know that tomorrow, at Solid Waste Management Authority, we're going to talk about the contract for the next three years for whoever's going to be towing them out, and definitely want to make sure that everything ducks are in a row.
Correct. Now, we'll add that the county did pass a resolution earlier this month for the ten-year extension.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Taylor, before I open up the public comment? Nope, no questions, public comment? Any public comment on this issue? No, no public comment, closing public comment? Alright, we're back. Is there any other technical questions and/or a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-sixteen dash thirty-three. Resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City, authorizing a ten-year extension of the abandoned vehicle abatement program until May twenty-twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
Alright, great. We have a motion and a second, can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, we are done with our agendaized items, we are now on the city council items. Is there any legislative matters that we need to discuss? Okay, so you know, city matters, we got city manager reporting thing for, oh, look at that, there's a big list underneath that. Look at that big list. There is one, okay, Mr. Vandemar?
Yes, I had a request from Councilor Short to, to draft a letter to Mr. Knight for the work that he did for you for the six months before I came aboard, and you find that in your packet this evening. So, the mayor signed that, I thank you for that suggestion.
He did, it was an excellent letter. Thank you, Mr. Short.
And we had, we got another letter, yet another letter from the water board concerning our wastewater treatment facility, and I would ask Public Works Director Eric Weir to come explain that to you.
When are we going to sell our bottled water?
Are they going to try and get us with triple jeopardy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vandemar, Mayor Gasnow, members of the council. So, yes, we did receive another letter from the state. This is in regard to an issue that we have been in communication with them for some time. In July of two thousand and fifteen, they issued a final decision to the city to reclassify our plant from its current grade three status to a grade four status, as far as the overall plant classification. So, in the state of California, there's a total of five grades for treatment plants. So, the one being the most simple, with really low flows, and this dictates what class of certification your operators have to have to operate that plant. Crescent City's plant, based on the flows that, that we experience in the treatment processes, was considered a grade three plant. In July, they notified us that the plant was being reclassified, because they had reevaluated the new MBR at the plant, and we're now going to be reclassified as a grade four plant. So, this would bring the plant classification status to basically the second highest in the state. This is, this is problematic on a, on a, on a long-term basis, just because of the fact that we are a rural, community disadvantaged community. To require us to have licensed operators and a licensed CPO that is a grade four operator isn't the easiest, and we haven't always had operators that could even meet this classification. That being said, it goes along to our previous conversation that we had in regard to, to the quality of the staff that we currently have right now. We do have two operators that do have at least a four. In fact, Utility Manager Tom Romesberg, who's in the office or in the audience right now, just received notification that he is a grade five certified operator. So, I mean, that is, that is not easy to do, takes years of education and experience. So, we can, we can meet this, but it, it, it's one of those things that we didn't take lightly as a staff. We, once we received the final determination back in July of two thousand and fifteen, we then petitioned that. We had arguments, trying to argue our case that we should remain a three. I still feel strongly that we should be a grade three plant. However, the, the most recent letter from the state, which is July two thousand and sixteen, informed us that our petition was denied, and we are going to be a grade four plant. I've since emailed the deputy director of the State Water Resource Control Board requesting some sort of a timeline. In their previous letters, they had given a certain timeline to create an action plan and, and come into compliance. So, I've emailed him, I have not heard back yet, but this is just to give the council an update that, that we probably will be going to a grade four classification.
In the initial conversations, what kind of timeframe were they looking at for us to establish an action plan?
Off the top of my head, I think it was thirty or forty-five days. So, in, in the email, I had requested... So in the email, I had requested, you know, a, again, a timeline for us to come into compliance and stated in the email that until some time, we would be considered a grade-three and all of our operator certificates. Because really what it comes down to is we have to have a certain grade to operate the plant, and then not only that, but the CPO, the chief plant operator of the plant, which has to have this highest certificate, he's the one that signs off on a lot of the operators' and trainings certificates and their experience time. So we wanna make sure that we are in compliance with the state regulations so that we don't lose any of the experience time for our operators.
Is the state gonna help pay for the education of our grade-threes, grade-fours?
They have not indicated that in any of their correspondence to date.
Thank you, state.
So, yeah, it's just another hurdle, but again, we are fortunate to have the staff that we have right now, and we can, can meet their requirements at this point.
Do you have a twenty-year commitment from Mr. Romesberg?
We're, it's funny you mention that, we were just, we were just talking about that. Maybe if he comes up to the podium, you guys might be able to get him to make that commitment.
Twenty more years, twenty more years.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Hey, I think you're gonna probably stay up here for the fire hall update too, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Vandemark.
Nice timing, you're getting quick. I like it.
Thank you. Yes, just to keep the council informed on the, on the fire hall project, ICBBG project is coming in line with the seismic retrofit, so the contractor is progressing nicely on all those things. We have an RFP out that is due this Friday for the fire truck as well, so we'll be getting final numbers on all of those costs. We have had to increase the scope a little bit with some of the asbestos removal on some of the flooring to the upstairs, so we are dipping into some of the contingencies that the council has authorized, but are, are still within budget at this point. We're expecting the fire hall project to be closed out sometime in mid-October, and at which point, we will hopefully have a project grand opening, and we'll celebrate a new fire hall that is not only seismically safe, but also modernized to function in, with today's needs.
Great. I noticed that we didn't go to the two-door system because I was talking to your father, and they said they could not find those big doors, but did we save any money on continuing with our four doors?
No, it's a short answer. The two-door system actually would have been a less expensive system. So now with the four-door system, we have four operators, there are two additional two columns to facilitate that. The benefit of the four-door system is there are a lot of additional options with that type of door, so you'll be able to get a door that's aesthetically more pleasing than what the two-door system would have been. But yes, the two-door system would not have met the wind rating that we are requiring for that particular building. So we're back to a four-door system, which is, which is one of the change orders that we had to approve.
Having backed a truck into that building a few times, can we make them a little bit wider?
They will be a little bit wider, and we can also talk to our equipment fleet manager, Mr. Jason Borjes, maybe we can put up some backup cameras on those engines, that would be nice. Love to talk to the city council about that.
Maybe we should just, just go fast.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. All right. Okay, Mr. Vandemark, we have a couple more items here on your report. Appointment to Homelessness Ad-Hoc Committee. Mr. Vandemark, you need to turn on your microphone.
Oh.
There you go.
I would ask the city clerk, Scott, to explain this to you and guide this process.
Great, thank you.
So these next two items are on here at the request of Pro-Tim Inscore, who is looking for appointments to the Homelessness Ad-Hoc Committee and appointment to the Mental Health Board.
The Supervisor Finnegan asked me to participate in the, his ad hoc committee, and I felt that as opposed to just participating, that it would be better if the council actually weighed in on this because this may be something that continues, and it may be something that we do an annual appointment to in the future because obviously the homeless issue is going to continue. So I felt like it would be best to bring it back to the, to the council. The other, I was also asked by the Mental Health Board to consider coming as a representative, and again, I said that there's a process for that. I talked to the Director of Mental Health and then checked with the county about, about appointments, and just felt that it was best that the council needs to weigh on that, and if somebody else would prefer to do either one of those things, I would be happy to step aside if somebody else wants them.
And definitely, they go hand in hand. Any, any other comments?
It's just, timing's unfortunate with the election upcoming, so I think there's several of us here that probably wouldn't, wouldn't be that beneficial to have, sit on those boards. So Darren, I don't know how much time you have or if you have an interest, but I think it should be one of you two on each of those boards. Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing either one of them.
If he does both of them, that would be great. They do go hand in hand. No, I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Who's being country?
I'm just clarifying.
You're clarifying.
That you do not have the time to be on either one of those. Yes. And Mr. Inscore?
I would make the time if I was appointed.
Right. Okay. Oh, that's okay. There'll be a lot more appointments coming up.
So you're going to be helping with the technical assistance grant for?
That's actually going to be a separate issue, and I'll report out on that from our city-county two-by-two, or the mayor will, but they're all rolled together because in our last meeting of the HELP, the Homeless Evaluation Liaison Program, which is the ad hoc committee, we actually, I was introduced to a lady who has produced a, or has facilitated the building of a housing in Arcata. City manager and I both talked with her, and that may provide some really great resources to move forward with the technical assistance grant for the No Place Like Home two-billion-dollar funding. So all these things just are interspersed. I just felt like it was, as opposed to me just going because somebody asked me to go, I need to do it because the council wants a representative there, so. But yes, thank you for asking about that.
Any other comments?
I do believe that both of these are growing concerns for our community, especially Crescent City, I mean, you know, the county and the city, the boundaries mean nothing to the homeless, and they go between the city and the county all the time, and we should have representation on these committees. And so with the blessing of the council, I would like to appoint Mr. Inscore to both of these committees, and go ahead and put it on our sheet, Ms. Scott, so that we have those committees on there for council appointments, so.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else in your report?
Well, the only other thing I would like to report is that I am attending on Thursday the Regional City Managers Group in Eureka, so it'll be my first opportunity to meet folks from up and down the north coast.
Great. They're a great bunch of people in all the rest of our regional communities. They're really easy to work with, especially those Fortuna people, they're, they're real fun. Right, Mr. Holly?
Yes. Yes.
Diet car. Hey, I'm on my way out. Okay, so we are under our next item. We're on our next item, which is city council reports. Who would like to go first? Catherine, please.
All right.
Bring back some decorum.
Kind of wishing that I would have read the bullying proclamation after public comment, but, let's see. Well, we had, we didn't have our council meeting on the first, so I attended the, the Calor Lifelight Memorial Service up in Brookings for the, the three members who lost their lives with the terrible tragic air crash that had happened, and it was a really lovely service, and I was glad I went, although it was really heart-wrenching, and I know that some, some of the rest of you went as well. And then we had the Delnart County Fair, and I thought that was really good that we had, the city had a booth, and I worked it on Saturday, and I worked another booth as well. And we had the BACRA, the BiCoastal Regional Airport Authority, meeting on the fourth, and we are still moving forward with the new airport terminal, which I am quite excited about. I think it's really necessary. And then, let's see, oh, I attended, as was already discussed earlier, the Youth Training Pathways event on last Thursday evening, and I also had lunch at the senior center then. And then I just wanted to send out positive thoughts to Lake County. They have yet another fire down there, and there's been a lot of structures that have been destroyed, unfortunately, so we're wishing them all the best, I'm sure. And regarding Measure Q, the opponents to our consumption-based sewer rate, I would like to just straighten out the facts that we do not have a sixty-percent poverty rate here in the city of Crescent City, and Kimmy Scott and Eric Taylor provided a more accurate percentage. It's high, it's around thirty percent, but it's not the sixty percent that is in the rebuttal, so I hope that the paper will pick that up. And I've talked to the mayor about maybe doing, he's going to do a coastal voices, but that was quite disturbing to see that something so hyperbolically in their rhetoric was able to be printed in the, in the rebuttal, that sixty percent is just way off base. And then tomorrow, we have a healthcare meeting with the healthcare district and the county, and I'm not sure what the agenda will be, but that's coming up. And then on Friday, the Redwood Empire Division is having a meeting down in Arcata, which I look very much forward to being in attendance. And then the Salmon Festival is this Saturday down in Klamath, so those are some activities that I've done.
Thank you. Mr. Holly?
Okay. Well, it was also my privilege to go to the Celebration of Life for the Calor Lifelight people that lost their lives. It was a serious and beautiful ceremony, and I know our city manager was there as well, and I think most, if not all, of the board of supervisors were there. So there was good, there was good attendance from elected officials, but it wasn't there for us. It was there for those people in uniform, and I was glad just to be a part of it, and the families. So, on the fourth, I did do a little time with, what's his name?
That guy.
That guy? At the, at the county fair, at the booth, and that was nice to have that booth and be able to answer some questions, and most people that came that day were, were people that were very nice to see, and so it's always a nice place to be for a little while. I did have the opportunity too to sit in for Mr. Inscore for the IGRC meeting, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, and Mr. Vandemark was there with me, and we, it wasn't a large attendance, but I think there were four or five organizations there and gave a summary of our important activities, and it's always good to exchange that information, so I thank you for that opportunity. And then on, on, I guess it was Friday, I went to the music camp, and I was able to spend some time with the kids in the music camp over at Crescent Oak, so that was nice. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think if we, you know, had some food at those intergovernmental meetings, might get the attendance up a little bit, you know, get a snack. Because I remember when I did it first, when I was on council, we had maybe about twelve people around from, you know, twelve different agencies. No, but it could have benefited from that too. But I'm just saying is that we definitely need to get more people to the table on those because they're really important meetings and they give good updates. Mr. Short?
Mr. Mayor, mine's pretty short. I too, there's no pun intended there, Mr. Inscore. I also attended the Celebration of Life. Michelle Tarwater was on the fire department with us for a couple of years, so she'll be missed. Other than that, every meeting on my calendar was canceled due to lack of agenda items after seeing, after seeing Mr. Inscore take a couple extra on. With the exception of the tri-agency meeting we had back on the twenty-seventh, which itself had a short agenda, so there's really nothing to report out as a result of that meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Inscore?
I did participate in the HELP meeting. I've actually been to two meetings. Homeless Evaluation Liaison Program is what we're referring to it. We've opened it up, we've had a large participation from the community, from homeless advocates, from law enforcement. Chief Mensel and Sheriff Aperson both have come to the table and have been a really great resource. Chief has put together an information card that I think will help us identify needs, not to try to catch people, but to, to catch the people's needs. And there's a, there's a difference, and I know that's a fine balance for law enforcement, but I, but I have to give great props to, to our sheriff and to our chief of police who are advocating to meet needs in this community. I know that's a change, a challenge, and a change, but they're doing fantastic jobs. So Chief, thank you. Thank you for coming to the table with some great ideas. I'm encouraged by that, and I think our community should be encouraged by seeing such proactive vision in law enforcement. That's probably not the case everywhere, but it is here, and I'm very proud to, to know that that's what we have working for us. So thank you, Chief. Tended Visitor Bureau meeting, for those who don't know, I was elected the chair of the Visitor Bureau. Were you absent at the time? No, I was there. Also attended our executive board meeting for the Chamber of Commerce. I did go on vacation, I went to New York City for the first time, which was an interesting thing. I didn't know exactly what to expect because I'd never been there, and I will say this, that going to New York City, it is sort of like what you see on TV and in the movies. It's a crazy place, but we had a blast, got to see a couple of different musical productions and had a really good time, and we went to Niagara Falls, and that's a lot of water. It's a lot of water. Fair was a great time, I stopped into the booth until Ms. Scott shoved me out and got me out of the way, and I kind of just came in and out because I had just came back from vacation. I participated as part of the panel for the initial screening for the, the new Delnart County Health and Human Services Director. Participated in our city-county two-by-two, we did talk about, and we, and we recommended that our respective staffs begin to work together to put together a plan and approach this technical assistance grant, which is seventy-five thousand dollars that'll be available to counties to put together a project plan for permanent housing, to take chronic homeless people and give them a home. There's two billion dollars out of that, two-hundred million, a hundred and forty million will be the first bite. It will be, it's based on competitively, by competitively sized counties. We're lumped in with counties under two-hundred thousand people. So it's, we're still really at a disadvantage, which is why it's so important that city and county come together and come up with a project plan as quickly as possible and as comprehensive as possible so we can get to the front of the line to get this, this money. It's not gonna solve all of our homeless problems, it's not gonna address temporary shelters, emergency shelters, that's a different issue. This money is for permanent housing. Yes, I'd like to fix all the other things, I'd like to see us have a shelter here. I've never questioned that, but that's not what this money is about. This money is about permanent housing, and I'm really glad that our staffs are working together, city and county, and I think that we will, as elected officials, will continue to push this issue forward. I would like to give some kudos to our new city manager. Everywhere I have gone, anybody that he has had interaction with has had something exceptionally positive to say. I think that's great, Mr. Vandemark. I'm, I'm, I think you're doing a fantastic job. you're doing a fantastic job. Appreciate that. He even made the paper, um, which I think is a good thing. When when somebody writes in a letter to the editor and and mentions as our brand-new city manager by name, in appreciation for the fact that that he went out of his way to pay for their prescriptions, I think that should be noted. It's not part of your job description, uh, but it does show your commitment to this community. And I'm very thankful and very proud to have a a leader who sees the needs here and is looking for ways to to meet them. Not that you're expected to go and do that for everybody, but whatever prompted you to do that, sir, thank you for doing that. I I I'm very, very, very proud of of that on behalf of our city. Reflects well on all of us. Um, and then one last thing, uh, because I was in New York, I I really regret that I was not able to be here for the celebration of life for um, Calor. Uh, I have a a person in our congregation who is the newest flight nurse for Calor Lifelight. And I can just say this, that that on behalf of her, her family, and her extended family, the care and concern that this community has shown, and the care that Calor Lifelight as an organization has shown to its employees, has been above and beyond um, anything that I think we could imagine. Um, but they re- they brought in outside crews to carry, to cover the flights while they made sure they spent time uh, with counseling and provided opportunities for for uh, uh, employees to to get that all under under control for their own emotions and everything, which I think is is amazing. But they start back to work this week. And I think that it is, um, I don't think it's inappropriate. If it is, then you'll just have to deal with it. But I don't, I think it is well within, if you're feel so led to do so, to say a prayer for those people who serve us in a way that most of us cannot do. And until you need it, you don't really appreciate it. And while I did not, have not needed the services of Calor Lifelight, I've had a lot of people that that I know and work with who have. And personally, this last week, had to use the services of Calor ambulance myself. So thank you to all of those first responders who serve all of us. Um, and again, I I'm just so very thankful for for the for the commitment of people that sometimes we never see in this community. And I hope that it doesn't take any further tragedies for us as a community to step up and make sure that you take an opportunity to tell the people who serve as public, thank you for what they do. Because we've got a lot of people who serve us in this community who don't get recognized regularly, and we should do a better job of this. Those of us as elected officials ought to find ways to make sure that every meeting, there's somebody that we highlight and say, thank you for doing doing a great job in serving this community. Um, so anyway, thank you for indulging me a little extra time, but I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I have been out the scene for the last four weeks because I had a hip replacement, which I am healing up very well from. Uh, much better than the last one that I had. So uh, I have been out of it, and now I'm getting back into the swing of things. Now I have three meetings this week, and then I have to get ready for school. That's starting up in two weeks. And so my schedule is full-on again. Um, the things that I have done, we did a safety meeting with the Chamber of Commerce down at the uh, cultural center, just to possibly, you know, put some extra lights around there so they feel safe coming in in the morning and then in the evening when they leave because they do a great job for us in promoting our city and county. Uh, I was at the fair booth. I had a great time. Mr. Taylor, I visited him a couple times on one day, and then I was in there with Ms. Scott and Ms. Lieber. I saw her. Uh, talked to Mr. Weir. I mean, we were represented by a lot of people in our community, and and then also Miss Green was in there too. Uh, so we had everybody representing us on on the deck and then helping answering questions. And and it was pretty positive throughout. Uh, on the county two-by-two, Mr. Inscore covered pretty much everything on the homeless issue, but we also did talk a little bit about consolidation of services. And uh, you know, everything was on the table. And uh, we're looking at just ways that possibly the city and the county could come together and uh, you know, at least, you know, maybe have a a better service for our public in any way that we can make uh, better uh, our, how how we deal with the public basically as a community. So that was one of the things, and and our staff is going to be working on that. So, uh, otherwise, um, like I said, I'm coming in all my meetings. They're coming in right now, which is good. And then I got school. Yeah. So for everybody else, uh, those being everything on our agenda, and there's no more business coming on, I would like to wait.
I'd just like to thank you all that took the opportunity to spend time in the booth at the fair. Uh, I do think it was a positive experience for the community. I know it wasn't exactly what you all planned for your weekend. I want to thank the staff, and I don't know if, I don't know if some of you are aware, but the two chiefs took the Saturday night shift, so we had Chief Menzel and Chief Wakefield in the booth. But I I know we got lots of positive comments. We got lots of people coming in to give us their complaints, but that's good. It's giving us a chance to look at some things that we didn't know about or hadn't remembered for some time. So again, I I just thank you. I thank you for the kind words, Mayor Pro Tim. And again, I I appreciate the the welcome in the community, but I was really pleased to have that visit the fair to give us the chance to highlight ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you too, also Chief. Yes, sir?
In light of the presentation that we had tonight and the divas' affirmative vote after it was over, should there uh, maybe be uh, some directive to take a look at the food truck ordinances?
I would think so.
Yes, some of you, I I think you all got an email today from the the city clerk, um, reminding you that of the ordinance that was mentioned earlier, that some work was done a few years ago. We're we're going to be pulling out that ordinance and seeing if we can resurrect part of it and bring it back to you. Apparently, it was, the process was not completed at that time. So we'll take a look at that and and bring it to your attention with maybe some modifications that were suggested this evening, and then have you take a look at it again.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, and I know the mayor and I both attended it. Speaking of the divas, we forgot to mention the first Friday Night Live, so I just wanted to give a little plug to the first Friday Night Live, and I'm looking forward to many more of those.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually coming up in our fall. It'll be awesome. So, okay, anybody else? I know it's been like a long time since we met, so we'll probably go another half hour if you want.
Let's see. No.
No, okay, so.
But I did, I did consider it.
Okay, so there being no further business before this uh, council, we are going to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled, which is coming up on? Oh, yeah, September sixth. Is that a Tuesday? It is a Tuesday, so we hope to see you then. We are now adjourned.